I'm good.
Um, you want me to call and anybody's raising their hand?
Yeah, that, um, um, I'll just get it started and I'd rather defer to you for the most part.
Uh, you guys are all in trouble now.
Yeah, I'm gonna just get it started and then you're gonna take over. Can you hear me okay, Mike?
I'm good.
All right.
We're all here. Mayor, we're all here.
All right, good deal. It's my agenda. Hey, there you go, is that the gavel?
That was it.
All right. Hi, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna get started here. One second when I forth the agenda, there we go. Call this meeting to order. Um, vote call, that.
Councilmember Cantino?
Here.
Mayor Schlumpf?
Rick.
Councilmember Dickey?
Here.
Councilmember Oshavo?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson?
Here.
Councilmember Leger?
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Mike, the Vice Mayor, so he can run the meeting there visually and I can hear you just fine and I'm following along as we go. Um, so, thanks for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Mike, first item, the consideration of proposed revisions to development fees with possible direction to staff reviewing notice of intent and the adoption schedule.
Rick, do we have a presentation on that?
Yes, Julie is going to give us our presentation on that.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As the council may or may not remember, about nine or 10 months ago, we started a process of reviewing our development fees, which is something that we're required to do at least once every five years. We have not reviewed our fees since 2005. So this notice of intent is a notification to the public that we are going to be presenting the council with a report of a revision to our development fees. And that will, report will be presented to the council at our next council meeting on May the 7th. Um, other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. You will get the report, um, and the consultants from Red Oak Consulting will be here to present that report and answer any questions from the council.
And that will be May 7th, Julie?
Yes.
Do we have any questions from the council? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. Um, and this is really unfair because it's something that just happened today, but, um, you know, there's been a lot of talk in the legislature about development fees. And I'm not sure that you've had any opportunity to react to it at all, but, um, in your, if you can answer, do you think anything that we want to proceed to do right now is going to be affected by what is being discussed at the legislature regarding development fees and the state budget?
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, my hope is that the legislature will not attempt to take advantage of the town's, um, development fees that we've managed to collect over the past few years for growth and for capital projects, and that they will not follow through with their proposal to use those funds to allow the, um, town to use those funds for operating costs. So my hope is, is that obviously we're not anticipating that in the budget and that those projects, or those funds are earmarked for specific projects related to growth, that, you know, developers have paid and people who have bought homes have also paid for those development fees. So obviously, we've not had time to react budgetarily to it, but we're just hoping that reason will prevail and that won't happen.
Thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor. So we'll proceed as if we're going to do what we were planning on doing. Just out of curiosity, because I didn't look it up and it's probably right in front of me, what is our balance in our development fee, um, fund right now?
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, our combined balance of our development fees is about $2.2 million.
Well, thank you. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, potentially that is what's at risk. Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Councilman Leger?
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you. Um, Julie, just so quickly, refresh my memory, the, the impact fees we're gonna be looking at, last time we had this discussion, we were looking at an inflationary adjustment. Um, what we'll be looking at here is an inflationary adjustment as well as increase in, uh, development fees across the board. Uh, our consultants are kind of reevaluating the whole enchilada, if you may.
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, the new revised fees do include an inflationary factor, but we will be not, we will not be adding another inflation factor on July 1, which is what we did last year. So that inflation factor is incorporated into the new fees.
Okay, very good. But overall, if they take, in addition to the, um, inflationary factor, have they made any other adjustments that they'll be recommending?
The development fees, fee schedule is based on the capital improvement budget. So any of those projects that have been added since we did it in 2005 are now part of it. So some fees went up and some fees went down.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Julie, do you know when we will be getting the development fees in front of us? They'll, or do you know what their timeframe is to do the study? They're doing a rather in-depth study, correct?
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, they have been doing the study for about nine months. It's been, it's a very long, laborious process. They will present that report to you on Thursday night, May the 7th.
Okay.
And then be able, you will be able to ask any questions. They will also present how they arrived at the fees and what those fees are.
Okay. Thank you, Julie. Anybody? Go ahead, Andrew.
Just to be, be clear on the process, the May 7th presentation will present the study to you so you can ask questions about it. With the notice of intent tonight, it starts a 60-day, uh, cooling off period, for lack of a better term, before which the, the town can, cannot hold a public hearing. So you have to wait 60 days, hold your public hearing, and then after the public hearing, you have to wait another 30 days before you can actually adopt. So you will see a public hearing on this in the first meeting in July. I believe it's the only meeting in July anticipated. And then the first meeting in August would be your anticipated adoption date. The reason those dates are important is because following adoption, there is a period of time that we need to wait before implementation. And the idea is to try and have implementation happen prior to the end of the calendar year because the proposed legislation, not today's topic on impact fees, but the bill that's currently living in the House and hasn't gone anywhere yet, has an implementation date of January 1. So the, the idea is that the fee study should be implemented under the current statute and the schedule is set up to accomplish that.
Okay. Thank you, Andrew. Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. Just to clarify, the first meeting is a public hearing. It's a Tuesday, so it's not like an actual meeting. Is that right? That's what we're seeing here.
July 2nd?
July 2nd, yeah. It says a public hearing. Sometimes we don't meet in July, so I-
It, it will be a public hearing regardless of whether it's on a Tuesday or a regular Thursday meeting. It's intended, I believe, I thought that was a Thursday. That's a, that's the first Thursday of the month, if I'm not mistaken. But the idea there is to have the first public hearing that's required under the statute. We've scheduled the second public hearing for the August date just to allow people to provide any comments that they need. So there's really a 90-day period prior to adoption for, in which comments can be accepted.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, July 2nd is a Thursday.
It is a Thursday.
So we'll change that notice of intent, repost it on the website to say Thursday, July the 2nd.
Then Andrew, the August 6th meeting, that's a Thursday also?
Correct.
So we will have, uh, public forum and then we will be voting on it that night?
The intent is to have an action item available for the council to vote on that night so that we can ensure that it's implemented prior to the end of the year.
Okay.
It's pretty close to the tightest schedule we have. I don't believe it can slip by more than about 30 days or you'll be outside of the window.
Do you have any more questions from the council? With that, we need a motion for the, give staff permission to move forward. With that, I'll entertain a motion to direct staff to move forward with the development fees.
So moved.
So moved.
And to adopt the notice of intent.
I'm sorry.
And to adopt the notice of intent.
And to adopt the notice of intent. Now I'll take the motion.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Vice Mayor, 5-0.
6-0.
6-0. Jay's here in spirit.
Yeah, right.
We're ready to move on to the, uh, presentation of the Town of Fountain Hills fiscal budget '09-10, draft budget and all funds. Julie, or is it? Ah, we get Rick to present this one for us.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to draw attention to this event that we have tonight. It's, uh, we have added a couple of this budget process, uh, which began in October for most of you, and even earlier for those of us in administration. Uh, it includes a couple of opportunities that, for you to comment on the budget, to go through it, give us feedback and direction. Uh, also, this is an opportunity for the public at large to get a glimpse at the, the first glimpse at the budget. It is a draft document. It's certainly subject to change. And mostly what we're gonna be doing tonight is allowing Julie to go over some of the specifics, uh, or highlights of the, of the budget. And then we're gonna be taking notes and answering questions, uh, along the way and are open to all feedback that you have. And hopefully, our intention is that when we bring this back the next time, it will be very, very close, if not exactly what you were expecting the budget to be this year. Uh, we think we're fairly close right now. We've had several opportunities to meet with you already and to hear you out. So with that, I'm gonna turn some time over to Julie.
And before we get started, Julie, um, I'd like to get some consensus from the council as to how you would like to proceed. Julie, if you, if we hit a spot and somebody's got a question, do you want us to stop you or do you want us to wait till you get through?
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, whatever is your pleasure. I'd be happy to stop if, just let me know and-
Yeah, we're going to go through the budget, just backwards, forwards, backwards, right?
Basically, what we're gonna present is the same presentation that the council saw the work study. This is for the benefit of those at home that didn't get a chance to see it. It's an overview of the budget. It's an opportunity again for the council and the public to, um, see, you know, generally what's in the budget. Welcome any questions that the council wants, any clarification. Um, I also want to note that we're going to have a public open house on May the 6th for the public to come in and see the presentation and ask any questions of staff as well.
Okay, Julie. Um, I guess what we'll do is we'll entertain questions to Julie. If you hit a spot that you'd like to stop and have a question on. Thank you.
Thank you. This, um, slide is a new slide. We didn't see it before at the work study. I want to just update the council as to where we are today in the general fund and the HERF fund, which are operating funds as well as our capital projects fund. Currently, we have received in the general fund $10.4 million. And what we have spent in the general fund is 9.1. So we're, we're, um, being very diligent about making sure that we don't spend more than we have. The budget at this time for, as of the end of March, which is nine months, is $12.1 million. So we're maintaining that. In the HERF for the streets fund, we've taken in $1.1 million, which is less, about 20% less than budgeted, but we've only spent about $900,000. So there, again, we're, we're staying within our budget. And our capital improvement plan, or capital improvement fund, which revenues the $800,000, that's our construction sales tax. And that's slightly over what we projected, um, because there's still construction activity going on. Um, we've transferred $1 million, and that's from either development fees or the general fund for capital projects. And we've spent about $2.2 million so far in our capital projects budget, which is about 85%. For next fiscal year, some of the new initiatives, um, something new that the council will see in the budget and the, and the, the general public, is we've implemented with our new software, we've implemented program budgeting. And what program budgeting allows us to do is to evaluate the cost of delivery of services to make sure that we're being efficient and running them as, um, efficiently and cost effectively as possible. So for, in some of the budgets, you'll see items that you never saw before. For example, in the law enforcement budget, we contract with law enforcement for patrol services. But you'll see salaries and wages in there. And what that is, is a piece of the program for animal control. The sheriff's office deals with barking dogs and their budget also houses the animal control and animal shelter fees. So some of those costs that are associated with managing those programs or running those programs are now allocated to the sheriffs or the law enforcement budget. In addition, the council budget, we didn't give the council a raise, but there is some salaries and benefits in there now that weren't there before, and that's for the staff that supports the council. So that can give citizens the true cost of programs that the town manages.
Julie, when, when the budget's finally approved and it goes on the website so that the public can look at that, can we break that out so that they can see where, uh, so you're gonna see a reduction in maybe administration and then an increase in the council's budget, but what it's really gonna do is it's going to be Shawna's time broken out over how she interacts with the council. And is there a way that with our final budget or any revisions that we break that out so that the public doesn't get confused when we're gonna look at it one year to the other and they see maybe one particular area like law enforcement, like you just pointed out, increase, but maybe a little, with a little side note that, yeah, this is coming from this particular budget from last year and moving over to this department. Can we do something like that?
We could definitely address that in the budget highlights.
Okay.
And maybe break out the program costs. This program costs so much money.
Yeah, I can see how it'd be real confusing for the public.
Absolutely, absolutely. This is the first year that we've done it, so it's definitely, it's new to everybody. It's new to us and it's new to the public.
The intent is to give the public a good, uh, look at what it costs to provide the services. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Julie. Um, Councilwoman Hanson?
Thank you. Um, I totally agree with that. Of course, everybody's going, oh, look, the council got raises. I mean, and like maybe Mike said, if it just had salaries and wages, you know, mayor, council, and then another line item, administrative assistant or support staff or something. And I think it would've gone a long way if we'd had just maybe a little additional verbiage in the budget document that would have addressed that. Because I think there's a number of places that I feel I have a lot of questions where if just a little bit of a clarification, just one sentence on a, on a line item would have alleviated that completely.
I think it would be, we'd be happy to do that.
Is that, Julie, is that that blank page that we have that there's, you know, you gave us in, is it, in this budget in '08, '09, there was a big description of, this budget includes, uh, you know, software for the computers. It includes, uh, like with the council, it was, we had the retreat. It had, you know, it said how much was budgeted for the council retreat, how much was budgeted for our conference and that kind of, and the different things that we all have to do and the staff has to do. Will we get that? Is that what that blank page is for?
Definitely. We'd be happy to get that detail to the council, you know, within the next week so you can have plenty of time to review it before May 21st.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Julie, sorry to stop you.
That's all right, no problem. Um, the other initiative is, um, we've talked about amending our financial policies to reclassify a piece of our fund balance as a rainy day fund. And we have programmed the rainy day fund balance, which is about $1.3 million, into the budget in a separate fund to be used. And hopefully, we won't have to use it, but it's intended to be used in the event of some revenue emergency. For example, if state shared revenues goes away completely, we will be able to use that rainy day fund to make sure that we don't have to cut the town in half because we just won't be able to operate without that source of revenue. So that's the purpose of the rainy day fund, and it is programmed into the budget for next year. We're also, um, gonna move forward with asking the voters to approve revenue bonds for major road improvements, and that major road improvement is the Millan overlay for Saguaro Boulevard, and that's about four and a half million dollars. Also included in the budget is a consolidated fee schedule, which will be adopted when the budget is adopted. In there, there's all of the town's fees for various service and charges. There are a few new fees in there. For example, there is liquor license fees, which we've never had before, and we've included those in the budget. So they will come forward to the council and we, when we present the budget on May 21st, we will make sure that we highlight those fees that are different from what they already are right now. Some of the new fees that are being proposed but are not included in the budget, they're not programmed in, is a franchise fee on utilities. And again, that requires a vote of the people, so we would be moving forward with, um, preparing that.
Julie, how long does that take before, let's say the voters were to approve it? We wouldn't see it in this budget year. We'd see it in the following budget year, wouldn't we?
I believe the storm, or the franchise fee would take, I honestly don't know. We don't have one, so I would assume if they approve it in November, it would, there would be a waiting period before it would be in effect.
Sure. I think our plan this year was just to put the mech, I think our goal actually, that we, uh, agreed that we would try to accomplish is to put together the mechanics for, for doing this generally, though, when you initiate a property tax, it does take a, a period of time for those taxes to be accrued and then remitted to, uh, the towns to do that. But there's a lot of work that we can do ahead of that in this coming year and the beginning of next year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. Mayor, just to clarify, since it's not programmed in the budget, are you thinking that we can move on any of those without expending any funds? Like, not actually do it, but whatever preliminary stuff we're talking about here can be done without it being in the budget?
I'm sort of not sure I understand the question.
The question you're asking is can we call for the election? And we have to budget that.
Any of the, yeah, or any of the research that we need to do to even decide if we're gonna go ahead with anything. You're, it says not programmed into the budget. Does that mean the benefit isn't programmed into the budget or the expenditures, or can it just be absorbed into what the staff is doing?
Right. Um, now I understand, sorry. The revenues, um, the revenues on any of these are not programmed into the budget as revenues. And the expenditures will be absorbed by staff. Staff is gonna continue to work on whatever it takes to, to research them and, and bring it forward.
Thank you.
Julie, wouldn't we have to, uh, budget a, uh, cost for the, um, election? Is that, is that in the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
We have the election for the, the voter-approved bonds. This would be alongside of that.
Oh, it would be right alongside of it, I'm sorry.
Yes. Um, increase in telecommunications sales tax, which is our, our cell phones and, um, any telecommunications, which includes alarm permits, telephone, cell phones. Um, we're proposing an increase. Obviously, come back to the council with a proposal to increase that tax from 2.6% to 4%. Um, liquor license fees, we talked about, um, revised development fees, which you'll see on May the 7th, and also a proposal to rent out a space in Town Hall and hopefully get some rent from that. Um, some proposed revenues and expenditures for '09, '10. The total of all funds is $32.4 million, and that sounds like a lot of money, and it definitely is, and it's more than last year. But if we look at it, there's a lot of one-time revenues in there. For example, we have bond proceeds of $4.5 million. We have stimulus funds of $2.5 million. We have grants of $2.6 million. We have to make sure to include these in the budget in the event that we do get them. If we don't include them and we do get the funds, we can't spend them. So they're in here, but obviously, if we don't get those funds, we're not gonna be spending those funds.
That would be, Julie, that would basically be the, um, all those funds that you just mentioned would be in the capital improvement projects.
Yes. We have, um, if you look at the chart, there's $9.8 million of capital projects as well as development fees, um, the special revenue fund, that's grants, those are all capital projects.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm sorry.
Julie, you've gone on to the slide. I was, wanted to ask you a question on the previous slide. Just, just a point of clarification, um, as Councilwoman Dickey had mentioned, franchise fees, stormwater, increase in telecommunications, et cetera, have not been programmed into the budget. So we will be taking each one of these initiatives and discussing them in great length to determine whether we want to move in this direction on it to council. The slide above that talks about, um, the revenue bond of $4.5 million. Now that has in fact been programmed in, into the budget. Is that, is that correct? Okay.
Yes.
Is that, is that, is that the amount we're looking at? Or is there a possibility that there might be a variation on that in terms of lowering that amount if we receive, um, additional funding on, for transportation projects or additional stimulus dollars?
Um, we could. I mean, we programmed it in specifically for Saguaro Boulevard.
Oh, I understand that.
So if somehow we got stimulus funds, then we wouldn't need it.
Yeah, I would be looking at reducing the burdens, taxpayers, basically. So before, I think Rick would like to-
Yeah, I, I think that's what our, you know, we've been talking about, well, if we're successful in securing funds for shade and that, obviously, release funds in our capital project fund that we can dedicate towards something else. And I think, I, I'm assuming that the council will find attractive the idea of contributing some funding towards some actual cash towards Saguaro in order to lower that burden and make that as easy as possible. I, I see probably there's three sources of revenue for Saguaro, a possible cash contribution. We have to see how everything plays out. We don't know right now. Uh, but then there's a revenue bond that would be based on our HERF money, about a million and a half, I think, is what we were thinking of. And then the balance probably being assigned to a GO or general obligation bond.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
Um, it's Rick, uh, or Town Manager, read my mind. So that was my point of clarification, is that we're in a discussion on, uh, this is an item for, uh, that would be considered as, in the, in the budget at this point, as dollars that would be spent should we move forward on the project. It needs to be budgeted. How it's going to be paid for is still subject to, uh, consideration.
Yep. That's a good, that's a good clarification. Anyone else? Hey, Julie?
Our expenditures for all of our funds are $32.4 million. And again, um, there's a lot of one-time expenditures in there. 40% of those expenditures are for capital projects that will be funded by either grants or stimulus funds or bonds. The general fund is the only fund that's not restricted for a specific purpose. That's where we pay for, um, our public safety, our parks and recreation, um, our building safety, you know, administration, all of those operating costs are paid for out of the general fund. Our budgets by fund, the general fund's $14.7 million in revenue, which is about a $2 million decline from two years ago. Um, we anticipate spending $14.5 million. In our highway user revenue fund, our streets fund, $1.6 million with expenditures of the same. Our excise tax, our economic development tax, which is that portion of the sales tax that's dedicated to economic development, we anticipate about $300,000 with expenditures of about $400,000. And development fees, again, that's based on building permits. We're only anticipating $100,000 in expenditures. There's only one expenditure and that's for $100,000. And our special revenue fund, which is our grants, again, this would be one-time revenues for a specific project. We've included about $2.6 million in projected revenues with expenditures of the same. And again, if we don't get the $2.6 million, there won't be a $2.6 million expenditure. Our debt services for outstanding bonds that we have, we have some general obligation bonds, which are repaid through property tax, as well as municipal property bonds, which are paid through from our local sales tax. And that's $3.1 million. Our capital projects fund, we're anticipating or budgeting $10 million in that fund. And again, those are one-time revenues of, um, bond funds, stimulus funds, and then expenditures are 12.8. So that additional expenditure over and above those one-time revenues is what's gonna actually come out of our surplus capital project funds. We have about $9 million in that fund presently, and will spend, anticipate spending only about $2.8 million of that.
Vice Mayor? Yes. Julie? Councilman Leger?
Maybe this is an oversight on my part. Looking at slide number seven, it states that total all funds is $32.4 million. That's expenditures all funds. On page 66, expenditure summary for all funds is $35, 35,384,000. Page 66. I know we had switched out some pages here and I'm not sure if that one was to be switched out or, look, look at the bottom of page 66. It says, uh, total all funds, $35,384,673, which kind of, and this has, that $32.4 million is, are we talking?
Well, I'll try to explain it as best I can. There, the one summary page includes everything coming into the fund, which would include transfers. Transfers aren't revenue. coming into the fund, which would include transfers. Transfers aren't revenue. So when we talk about revenues, we might have 32.4 million in revenues, but what we have coming into a fund might be a transfer from another fund. So on that, on that summary, I have to double check. I'm just trying to come up with what I think might be the explanation.
Page 66 is in revenues, though. Page 66 is expenditures.
Yeah, those are expenditures.
Oh, sorry. Same thing would apply to transfers.
So transfers is probably the delta.
Transfers aren't expenditures. They may show up twice in this summary sheet, but they're not truly expenditures twice. They're an expenditure out of the fund you spend it out of, but they're also coming out of another fund. So in the, in the chart, and again, I'm guessing why there'd be a difference. I have to go back and double check.
So what you're saying, basically, is the delta's in the transfers, probably?
I'm, that's the supposition I'm making. We'll double check. Yeah.
Clarification.
Yes, absolutely. Our operating revenues, again, this is, these are operating funds, our general fund. In '08, we had $16.7 million for fiscal year '10. We're expecting $2 million left at 14.7. In our streets fund, in '08, we had 1.9, and we're expecting 1.6, or projecting it for next fiscal year. Our excise economic development tax, 300,000 is what we got in fiscal year '08, and we're anticipating approximately the same amount in fiscal year '10. Operating expenditures, our general fund in fiscal year '08, our actual expenditures was 15.3. For next fiscal year, we're anticipating $14.6 million. In our streets fund, 2.2 million in fiscal year '08, and we're anticipating only 1.6 in fiscal year '10, which is next year. In our downtown economic development, spent $100,000 in fiscal year '08, and $400,000 in fiscal year '10. And that $400,000 includes a $250,000 transfer to the capital projects fund for the downtown development. It's part of the development agreement. So that's what makes up that, there's a big amount why it's going from 100,000 to 400,000. There's a $250,000 charge in there that'll be transferred to the capital projects fund. And you'll see that again in the capital projects fund, the 250,000.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. Julie, I'm sorry if I'm missing a point someplace. On the FY '09-'10 budgets by fund that we just did, had general fund expenditure 14.5. And then on this one, under operating fund, operating expenditure says 14.6. So am I just trying to figure out, because I'm kind of squeezing $100,000 here somewhere, because it looks like, and on what you're doing, the one that was like a couple before this, it looked like we had some wiggle room there between revenue and expenditures in the general fund. And then on this one, it says 14.6. On the one, two before, it said 14.5.
It should be 14.5.
Oh, it should be. Okay.
Okay.
And then, sorry, to go on, but with the development fee, 100,000, and that looks like it's going to a street project, and this is probably just for later discussion, but with the other balance in the development fees, we're not looking at using any of that for any other projects at this point, except for a street project for about 100,000.
Traffic signal?
A traffic signal. Okay, so we would remain having about 2 million, or whatever that is, in our development fund.
Correct.
And then that'll probably lead me to ask about the fire station then, and if that's based on growth at all, when we get back to when we start talking about capital projects. I'll bring, I'll ask you about that.
Okay.
Vice Mayor Leger?
I believe, however, that that whole fund cannot be dedicated to a fire station. Only a small portion of it can be, which, so, yeah, the question is, what is the, is the development fee fund balance for fire going into this fiscal year?
The current development fee fund balance in the fire development fee fund is 37,000. Most of the development, development fee funds is in open space.
We've been preserving, waiting to get to our trailhead.
Yep. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hey, Julie?
Oh, I thought you said hey.
You're on.
Okay. These are our capital revenues. Again, these are revenues that are for capital projects. Development fees, again, $100,000 is what we're projecting for next year, which is down $600,000. And this is based on building permits. Our excise tax, which is our local sales tax, down slightly to 300,000. Our capital projects fund is down significantly. We took, had $2.1 million in fiscal year '08, but the largest portion of that was from a transfer from the general fund. We had a surplus. So we're not anticipating any surplus in the general fund this fiscal year to transfer over to that capital project fund. So the only money going into there will be construction sales tax.
So Julie, so the public understands is typically that at the end of every year, we have some revenues left over. We've collected more revenues than what we spent. Remember, we saved on some expenditures, and that money goes into the capital improvement fund. What you're telling us now is that you don't anticipate there'll be any money left over this year to go into the capital improvement fund. So we'll just be looking at that point, or $500,000?
That's correct. Correct. And stimulus funds, again, and budgeting 2.5 million. And then the grants is also related to the, either stimulus funding or competitive grants. And HERF is, the HERF actually is a transfer out of the streets' operating budget. And that is for our pavement management program. And we are estimating about $800,000 this fiscal year, and that's for pavement management. Next year, however, we're only going to have about $200,000. And that's a transfer right out of the operating fund. And that's because there's less HERF revenue coming in. So that, that money pays for our pavement management program. So obviously, that is something that we're not going to be able to continue in the next couple of years until the HERF revenues come back up. And then our last capital revenue is, is the bond proceeds of 4.5 million. And our expenditures, these are capital expenditures. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, that's all right.
Jumping back to the, the grants, we had an email a few days ago about a couple grants that Randy was able to submit for, and it was from Mitchell's office, apparently. And I thought that was for Suaro and possibly for Shea Boulevard. Do those applications live anywhere? Did they get included? Or do we need to, or is that just way out there?
Mayor Vice Mayor, I'm not sure what the schedule is on the distribution of those grant funds.
Randy wants to come up near.
That is highway user money, and it's, it's something that we're able to apply for every five years. Not part of the stimulus, I just want to make that clear. Go ahead, Randy.
Yes, Mayor, Councilman Hanson. What we actually did, that wasn't actually a grant application. That was just preliminary information submitted on those two projects. So the next step would actually be grant application and then grant award. And then if we, you know, if that all actually comes about, then...
Three years from now?
Who knows?
And if, for some reason, Rick, Senator Mitchell is able to, or Congressman Mitchell
is able to get us any revenues from the current budget that they're working on, or the future budgets they're going to be working on, that would just supplement or replace revenues that we've already got budgeted. So if we got money saved for Suaro Boulevard, we obviously would move forward with a bond issue, but would just replace those funds coming in from the, from the Congress or from the budget?
I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what you're suggesting, but...
If, you hear about pork barrel spending all the time, and the mayor called me a month or so ago, and he says, hey, if I have an opportunity to put something onto a bill, would you take it? And I said, well, we, we only get about 86 cents of every dollar we send to the, to the federal government. So if we have a chance to get some of them back, of course, we'd support it, you know? So my question is, we wouldn't really change anything in our budget if we got money in that came from a different source. We just wouldn't expend the money or transfer the funds.
That's correct. Yeah, I thought, I was, suppose that's what you were saying, and that, that is correct. We can receive money. It's just that we have an expenditure limitation. And honestly, the two projects that we submitted, it would take us a little while to gear up for those projects, obviously. And so we'd probably be well past this upcoming budget year before we were ready to really get into that project anyway. Yeah, that's correct.
Randy, I'd like to thank you for keeping an eye, an eye out for the town and looking out for those type of revenues that are out there. Thank you. Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Some of the capital projects that we're doing next year, obviously, again, these are funded, if we get the funds for them, we'll do the projects. If we don't, we won't. The downtown project is the project that we were talking about, the sidewalk improvements. It's part of the development agreement. Not spending any money on any of the trails or open space this year. We're not spending any money for any improvements at the parks. We are spending a significant amount of money on streets. And again, this would be Shea Boulevard and Suaro Boulevard for about $10.3 million. And that's, again, provided that their funding comes in for that. We are doing some work on traffic signals, spending a little bit of money on stormwater, stormwater drainage, and I believe that's also a grant. I believe that's grant-funded.
Stormwater is coming to capital projects.
It's coming out of the capital projects fund.
It's Del Cambray, isn't it?
It's, I'm sorry?
It's, which street is that again? That's the...
Del Cambray.
Del Cambray.
And then general government, $100,000. That's to perhaps purchase another module from our accounting system, either a GAS module or an HR payroll module. So we're looking at that next year.
Julie, that would enhance the system that we just put in, right?
Correct. Yes, it's another module.
Could I go back to the traffic signals? That, that would basically be, the $100,000 we have there, that's not, just so the public is aware, that's not another traffic signal. That's an upgrade to the software, the mechanics that are in the boxes at some of the signals that we've got that are rather old and need to be upgraded?
That's correct. It's to upgrade all the technology and all of our signals in town, yes.
Thank you.
And then the fire and emergency is the, if the grant, if we're successful in getting a grant for a new fire station. And we are not replacing any vehicles next year, so we're not spending any money in, for vehicles.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Mayor Leger, or Vice Mayor, Councilman Leger. I'll get it right.
Julie, the capital expenditure, the first one, downtown, looking at our capital projects, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's $250,000 for streetscape improvements on the south side of the avenue per our development agreement with Casnov. Seeing that project is, it appears at this point, is not happening. I question having that capital expenditure in there. And I would imagine by the time we consummate the budget, we will know that that project is not moving forward. And if it did move forward, we'd be looking at another development agreement, probably with another developer. And it would be highly unlikely that we'd be doing that streetscape improvement in this coming fiscal year. So I just encourage you to dialogue amongst your, your budgeting staff and talk about the possibility of just whipping that right out.
Mayor Vice Mayor, Councilman Leger, when we put this budget together, obviously, we knew that there was an extension on, for the development agreement, and we understood that it was in question right now. But, you know, we, we left it in in the event that something was worked out with them. But definitely, I would, we may know by May 21st or June when we adopt a budget, in which case we would take it. And that's the dedicated fund. That doesn't affect the general fund.
The excise tax.
Yes. It wouldn't affect the general fund at all. It would just be, stay in the, in the downtown fund.
Well, you're on top of it, and I appreciate that. It's just a good reminder. Put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Debt service?
Okay.
Our debt service, our general obligation, those are voter-approved bonds. Again, our revenues, there's a property tax, and that's about $1.4 million, and that's what we will be levying. Our municipal property is sales tax, and again, those are transfers of $1.3 million. Revenue bonds is our HERF bonds, and this is the last year for those HERF bonds, and that's a transfer out of the streets' HERF operating budget into this debt service revenue. So that's an example of things that may get counted twice in governmental accounting, but that's $100,000. And then the Eagle Mountain Community Facilities District, that is bonds that are paid back with property tax in that subdivision of about $400,000. And those are the expenditures that go with those bonds. Our operating budget, which is our general fund highlights, where our general fund revenues come from, we're anticipating $14.6 million. Forty-two percent of that is state shared revenues. And again, that's our state income tax, state sales tax, and our vehicle license tax. Another 45% is our local sales tax. And that's 2.2 out of the 2.6% sales tax. And then we have charges for services, licenses and permits. Primarily, most of the budget comes from those two revenue sources, the local sales tax and the state shared revenues. Where our general fund money goes, we've been actually very fortunate in this budget year. Our anticipated expenditures are $14.5 million. And we've been able to realize some savings in a couple of areas. In one area, particularly the sheriff's office, the contract did not go up 10 or 12% as it was, you know, it could have. They actually lowered it down. Same with Rural Metro. Rural Metro came back and had been getting 5% increases, and their contract actually came in less this year. So we've been very fortunate with those two contracts, as well as savings in our health insurance plan. We got, we anticipated about a 15 to 20% increase, and it was less than 10%. As well as, we had several employees who transitioned over to a health savings account, which saved the town a significant amount of money. So we were very fortunate to have those savings. Otherwise, we would really be making more severe cuts. So we're very appreciative of that. So as I said, our total expenditure's about $14.5 million. We've left, there's very little room for, you know, we budgeted 14.6, we're spending 14.5. That only leaves $100,000, which isn't a lot of wiggle room in the revenue side. So we didn't want to make budget everything, just in the event that all of our revenues didn't come in. Our general fund operating budget, the $14.5 million. Again, the two largest revenue sources over $12 million is the state shared revenues and our local sales tax. And out of that money, 5.9 pays for public safety. And that's our, our law enforcement and our fire and emergency. Public works is $1.4 million. Planning and zoning is 1.1. Our recreation includes our parks and our recreation programs, as well as our community center and our seniors is 2.7 million. And our legislative and administration, which is all the overhead, is $3.4 million.
I just want to point out, because this was a topic of discussion last year, also when, when they, when the state talked about state shared revenue and trying to equate that with what cities actually do with it. And as it was last year, it is this year, very close, the amount is very close to what we spent on public safety. That's just a point to make. Thanks. Thank you.
Go ahead, Julie.
Some of the sustained level of service that we have included in this year's budget is we are continuing our overseeding and maintenance program at Fountain Park so that that park continues to look green. We are moving forward with significant investment and economic development programs. We're also continuing with our law enforcement and our fire services. There's no decrease in service there. We also included the contracts, the three-year contracts that we have with outside agencies. And that's the Boys' Girls' Club of Scottsdale, the Fountain Hills Community Theater, the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Tourism, the Extended Hands Food Bank. And we had funds in there for special transportation services, which now we realize the county is discontinuing that program as of June 30. We are working to, with a volunteer program to see if we can help pick up some of those citizens and clients who have been using that service. So, but the money, the money is still in the budget there that we had allocated for special transportation services. We haven't taken that, those funds out.
Julie, do you know when you'll be coming back to the council, or Rick, if you can tell us when you'll be coming back to the council as to the alternative to that STS?
We hope that May 21st that we'll be back at you with a presentation on, on the alternative program.
And what was the budgeted amount? It was 90,000?
90,000.
90,000. Councilwoman Dickey?
Vice Mayor, thank you. So the money that's in there now, will that be able to be used in the effort that we're coming up with? It would probably be less, but is there any problem with that?
That's one of the reasons why we haven't programmed it out of the budget, because we're unsure what the costs are going to be as... we're unsure what the costs are going to be associated with this new program. But we clearly expect and hope that there will be some savings to the town as we move to this volunteer program, certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Kate?
Some of the areas in the budget that we did reduce for savings is there's no merit or cost of living increases for any staff in town. There's no overseeding in any of the parks, other than Fountain Park. We've reduced our mowing at the parks by half. We've eliminated palm tree trimming this year. We've reduced our fleet by 11 pieces of equipment. Our fountain preventative maintenance delayed, pumps, clay valves, things like that that are very expensive. We're hoping that they'll last another year. We've reduced the number of issues, printed issues of the avenues, down to four. We're delaying wash maintenance. And then our annual pavement management has been reduced as well.
Rick, could you maybe explain to the public what this will mean, what they will see? Will there be any, anything they'll visibly see by any of these reductions?
Thank you. Yes, probably the most visible thing that we're proposing not doing this year will probably affect the parks with the overseeding. Silver lining to that is that I have been told that by somebody who knows a lot more about horticulture than I do, that actually not overseeding it every year is good for the long-term sustainability for the permanent turf. But if we have a normal year, in fact, you'll probably notice that at Fort Peaks, we didn't overseed this year. Isn't that right, Mark? So, that is a field particularly that my son plays at, baseball, and it's pretty green. It's, it's not exact, it doesn't turn snow white or yellow, but it's green speckled, isn't it?
Just a clarification. We did overseed the north soccer field. We did not overseed the baseball field.
Yeah, and that's where he plays. And it does not look bad at this point. But obviously, if we overseed, then that has a direct correlation with the amount of mowing that we have to do. And so, that's how we were able to reduce the mowing. Total cost associated with not overseeding is in the neighborhood of about $75,000 that we're saving by not doing that this year. So, that's a significant thing.
What was the, Rick, what was the cost savings in the reduction of the mowing?
What was that? Mark is...
Ballpark?
Looking that up. I'm going to say in the neighborhood of $40,000.
It was a reduction for our mowing costs of $23,423.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, that doesn't include Fountain Park. Otherwise, it would have been higher.
So, the rest of that, then, is the overseeding itself.
Yeah, we actually, we actually would save not only mowing, we also save, obviously, the scalping cost, which is another $11,000. And then, so those combined, it's close to $50,000.
Was there any reduction at Fountain Park, or is the mowing schedule on the same as it's been for Fountain Park?
That park basically remains the same, but that's the part that's affected most by the palm tree, not trimming them this year.
Okay. Councilwoman Dickey?
Mayor, thank you. Couple of questions. What we see is fountain preventative maintenance delays. So, that could be, you know, seamless, or it could be not too, it could be at bigger expenses, put it that way. Wash maintenance delays, is that going to have anything to do with fire prevention or anything like that?
The issue there is that we have, we've really hit our wash maintenance hard enough that because of the resources we've expended there in years past, and particularly this last year, I think, and Randy, I think you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Thomas told me that we're in a condition right now where we actually bought ourselves a little bit of time now with the wash without increasing significantly any dangers associated with not doing that wash maintenance.
Thank you. So, Vice Mayor, then, just from a person that would look around and say, what are the possible things we'll see? Obviously, the grass, that kind of stuff. The wash, sounds like that's going to work out. If the annual pavement management and the fountain preventative maintenance could potentially, but you are, you are presenting this to us in a way that I'm understanding, then, that these things are more, less likely to happen than not. So, I'm comfortable with that. And I also just want to thank you and appreciate that you are not asking for merits or cost of living increases, looking around what people are going through right now. We appreciate that sensitivity. Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Hanson.
Thanks. I thought we had discussed at some meeting, maybe an earlier budget meeting, that the avenues were all going to go electronic.
The what?
The avenues was going to be totally electronic.
We may have discussed that. The idea was that we would limit the number of avenues. I think there was some sensitivity at that time when we discussed, and it may have been at a retreat, that just totally going electronic may, may reduce the amount of communication to our citizens to an uncomfortable level. So, maybe that we would do a few issues during the year, but for the most part, it would go electronic. So, I think what we're proposing to you, and we could certainly change this as a happy medium, we think that we could still do some printed versions, reduce costs significantly by doing that, but mostly be electronic.
And if I was...
Again, we're open.
When we had the business showcase, we were trying to collect as many email addresses as we could for the avenues.
And it was quite, I mean, I don't think that was a very, you know, very scientific survey, but the responses that we got back seemed to be very favorable towards the electronic newsletter.
And, yeah, Councilwoman Hanson, I think if I remember right, we were trying to encourage the public to go the electronic way. But I think we had the discussion that it's going to take more than a year to move that direction and just start working our way. And I think this is a good, a good start. By reducing it, they're all going to start asking us, you know, where's the, where's the avenue? Oh, we can get it online. I don't know, too many people don't have a computer now, so.
Well, like I said, and we're open to that, and we're sensitive to the fact that some people don't have access. But you're right, most people do.
And maybe they could just be made available in public places, like the community library and library.
Sure. That's our...
We would save with mailing costs.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Well, how much are we talking about with this, anyway?
No, she's, Katie's not here.
Sorry. Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's about $8,000. An issue. So, about $32,000. And I don't believe that includes postage. Postage is an additional $2,000 each.
Thanks, Julie.
In our street operating fund, again, the revenue comes from our gasoline sales tax, and it's based on population. It's a shared revenue. We are, receive lottery proceeds, which is, they call it LTAF-1, which is not the same as the LTAF-2 that we got for the special transportation services. That's about $113,000. Those funds can be used only for street and highway purposes. The expenditures of 1.6 include our final payment of $136,000 for that debt service payment, and $171,000 transferred over for our pavement management Some of the sustained level of service in our streets fund is the median maintenance. We will continue that. It was previously in Public Works. It's now in the streets fund. These medians are in our streets, and it's appropriate use of street funding. The personnel levels have been maintained, and the street sign maintenance will continue as well. Some reduced level of service in the streets fund is, again, there's no merit or cost of living increases for any of the staff programmed. We've reduced the fleet maintenance, which means we've also reduced the workload for one of the street personnel who is responsible for fleet maintenance. And our street sign replacement program, the street signs have all been completely replaced, so there is a reduction in the budget for that. Our downtown, our economic development, this is, again, our excise tax. Those revenues are from the 0.1% of our local sales tax. Anticipated revenues is about $300,000, and it's to be used solely for economic and downtown development. Those total expenditures of almost $400,000, again, includes that $250,000 for reimbursement to the developer for the downtown improvements. And again, if that development agreement goes away, that, those funds will be taken out of the budget. At this point, we'll go over briefly the capital budget highlights, and I'll turn it over to Mary Martin, and she can talk about each of the projects and where the funding is coming from.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We've talked a little bit about the capital projects scheduled for next year. As we said, there's a number of projects that will go forward only if the source of funding that's been identified for the project materializes next year. That's primarily the bond proceeds and stimulus and grant funds that have been programmed into the budget. The first project that you see is the Town Square Avenue of the Fountains project that we discussed briefly, which is a project that is called out by a development agreement for the Town Square development. The Shea Boulevard Climbing Lane is funded at $2,704,000. Of that, $1,076,000 is grant funding from MAG. $1,081,000 is stimulus monies, and $547,000 is anticipated to come from the Capital Improvement Fund. The Shea Boulevard Whiting Project of $1,600,000, we anticipate $1,120,000 in grant funding from MAG and $480,000 in CIP funds. Saguaro Boulevard is a mill and overlay project. This is one of the projects that's been in the CIP for a number of years, and we've, every year, pushed it off another year because funding has not been available. We have it programmed into the '09-'10 budget in hopes that we can obtain bond proceeds to continue with that project. We anticipate the cost at $4,500,000. There are a number of projects under the sidewalks category. Two of them are Fountain Hills Boulevard projects. One is near the middle school, and that's the project that has grant funding attached to it. There's $50,000 in grant funding, as well as $288,300 in CIP. The second portion of the Fountain Hills Boulevard sidewalk is an area close to Shea, and that's CIP-funded for $100,000. And then the third component is our annual sidewalk plan, which is totally funded by CIP at $342,000. Again, there's the traffic signals upgrade program, and this is basically upgrading our traffic signals to the current standard from a standard that's become obsolete. This would give the signals extended life and also allow for better timing of the signals. In the drainage category, we have one drainage project scheduled, and that's the Del Cambray Drainage Project. It's $86,000, totally funded by Capital Improvement Funds. The pavement management program is our annual slurry sale program. Normally, we come forward and talk about doing one zone each year. Because of the limited funding, next year, we're proposing to do one half of a zone. This is going to be funded, $171,000 through HERF monies and $285,000 from CIP. And finally, the fire station relocation program is anticipated to be funded entirely from stimulus funds of $1,456,000. If there are any questions?
If one...
We have one more page.
Is it?
Councilwoman Dickey?
Ah.
Oh, we got one more page. Okay.
We have the municipal government software project, which is the continuation of the MUNIS software system that we've been implementing this year. This is a $100,000 transfer from the general fund to the Capital Improvement Fund to fund this continuation. And finally, we have the Emergency Operations Center, which is partially grant-funded. It's $72,000 in grant funding and a match of CIP funds for $80,000 total. All of these are contingent on, again, the source of funding materializing next year.
Okay. Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is, this is our opportunity to speak, and I'll probably this will, I'm going to take this opportunity to ask about the fire station one more time because we're, we are getting a recommendation from staff to not move ahead with the fire station unless we get the stimulus funding. So, I guess I'm going to question staff and my council colleagues because I'm just not understanding why we're not moving ahead with that, given the information that we have gotten. And this has been a couple of years now. We, we've been told that the reason we need it is based on a methodology that is widely used, widely accepted, and that there is a need for it. We know we're not going to have carry forward this year from fees to go into the capital fund, but we do have eight, seven, nine, whatever, million dollars in our capital fund. This is an emergency public safety issue. I don't see where we're, where we have anything that we're saying, okay, we can't do this because we need X in 10, 11, or 11, 12, that's going to supersede the need for this. So, help me to understand why this is not a need. Help me to understand why you're bringing that forward. And I would ask my council colleagues to help me understand why they don't think that we should move forward with this unless we have stimulus funds. I don't know the best order to do that. Maybe I should ask why it's not being recommended to us to consider this unless it's stimulus funding. And unless, you know, unless you'd like to do it a different way.
Rick, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, we're, we're open to your direction either way. We have to start with one end or the other. And so, we picked this end, perceiving that that was probably more in alignment with what we perceived your intentions to be thus far. But we're certainly open to taking direction from you.
Councilwoman Dickey, if I can inject, one of the things that Councilman Leger and Rural Metro has agreed to do, and Councilman Leger brought it up, trying to think outside the box, we knew we had a situation that we had a particular area that wasn't getting addressed with, where 90% of our calls, if I'm correct, Scott, are health-related or ambulance service. And it was my understanding that the council tended, we addressed that for the time being, so that we still got the areas covered as far as public safety goes. Yes, we do understand that there's a need to move the fire station so that we can service the calls and be more balanced than we are now. But it's, you know, we have an opportunity maybe to get some stimulus funds. And if we get those, we've kind of told staff, we agree to move forward and go ahead and build the station. We know, as I think all of us have experienced over the course of the council's time period, that the downturns don't last and good times don't last. But at some point, we're going to turn around, and we're going to come back up, and we'll have the funds at that point to build that station. But till that time comes, I think we've gone down that frugal path for the time being to satisfy the needs that are out there. And Scott, if I've misspoken or if there's anything that you need to correct me on or need to add, please come up here and satisfy the council.
Thanks, Mayor.
And Mayor?
Thanks. I'm not sure, I don't want to cut Scott off if he's coming up, but Councilmember Dickey brought up a good point. And our discussions regarding the fire station location and design, there was a lot of discussion. And I think council, or staff likely heard council speak of spending the dollars to ultimately build the project once we had stimulus funding. So, I don't blame them for having that associated with it. What I wanted to clarify with Ms. Getty, what Ms. Martin is that I believe the income coming in on capital funding would be only about $500,000 this year. Is that close to accurate, Chief Greca? Sorry, you hurt the mic. But I think that's a question for Ms. Getty.
Mayor, council? Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Archambault, what you said is absolutely correct. If I had my brothers, would I rather come into this budget year with a guarantee that we could build this station? Absolutely. I do feel a little bit more comfortable that the timeframe with the grant stimulus is probably not going to come to fruition until January or February of '00, '10. So that gives us kind of some wiggle room in this budget year here. If we're not successful in the grant funding piece of this project, I would certainly be in front of you next February at the start of the budget year, or I should say, in Ms. Getty's office, encouraging strongly to move forward with funding the CIP fund for the station in '10, '11. One thing that was kind of encouraging that I heard from the architect, that we had a meeting with Rick, is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Rick, that he said that the cost projections are coming in about 30% lower than what they anticipated for construction. So I would say in this next year's window, this year's budget, and obviously '10, '11's budget, there is a great opportunity, however it's funded, that we could see some real savings in construction of this project, just based upon what the economy is like at the present time. One other thing I'd like to caution you on, even though the Frye Center quote-unquote substation is in the contract to hopefully be signed and approved next week, the volatility of the ambulance business could change that dynamic at any given time. Again, and that's based upon their revenues and transports, not only in our operation, but the roll-up of all the ambulance operations within the world of Southwest Ambulance. So that could be another thing that could cause us to reconsider how we want to move forward on this project. So, you know, I think the whole thing is kind of dynamic right now. I believe we have a window of opportunity for the first half of this budget year, even though I know that once we commit to this, we're committed. Would I like to see this with a firm commitment? Absolutely, but I think we do have a little bit of wiggle room based upon the timeframes of the stimulus, because we're not going to know probably till the first part of next year if we're going to have stimulus money or not. So I hope that answers your question.
Do you have another question, Councilwoman?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, just a couple of different things. That makes sense if we're saying that the numbers would be coming in lower to build it, then I wouldn't want to lose that opportunity, obviously. So if we don't have it in this budget, and we don't get the stimulus funding, I mean, then of course, we would be waiting, you know, a year from this July to even be able to begin anything. So, you know, given that we'll probably, you just said, there'll probably still be pretty good value at that point, but I wouldn't want to miss an opportunity to get something done at a time where we could save resources doing that. The other part about resources, again, has to do with what Mike said, which is we're over utilizing one of our stations. So this isn't just a matter of putting one someplace, it's a matter of equalizing. If there is a fire, if there's a 10% chance of a fire, there's still a 10% chance of a fire. Again, I know if there's only 500,000 coming in, there would be no carry forward, but there is a balance. So I guess I would say, what is something that's more important than this that we are not doing this for? What would be something that we think could come up that's more important, that would take the whole eight million, that we would not consider putting this in the budget regardless of whether we get the stimulus funding? That's, you know, I'm glad that we're getting the ambulance service. I think that that's harsh part of a solution, a short-term solution, but building a station is more of a long-term solution, that we can't decide one day to do it, and then it's done the next day. So I can see that there's probably not support for going forward and putting this in the budget as a budget item, regardless of whether we get the stimulus funding. But I believe that this is probably one of the most important things we do, is public safety. I don't know why we're as hesitant to do this now, especially when we might get good value for our money, and it would help alleviate extra pressure on the other stations. So if there is, God forbid, a couple of fires at once, we're in a little bit better shape. So I'm still not really sure why we would not put this, the same we put a sidewalk, the same we put everything else. I'm not really sure, based on all of the information that you and Randy Roberts have given to us in the past, to go in this direction, and it's been several years.
Julie, we have it budgeted in our budget currently, correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct, it is.
And if we decide, when we get the architectural plans done, and the council would have the option, if we didn't get any stimulus money, but we saw a huge value in moving forward the station now, could we transfer the funds out of the CIP project to budget that particular item?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, it's included in the budget as an appropriation. So absolutely, whether the stimulus funds came in or not, the money is there, and you've appropriated it. So yes, if you decided that you wanted to fund it out of the capital project budget, you could do that.
So we would have that opportunity then.
Just Councilwoman Hanson?
You just have to be clear that there's no revenues appropriated to support that expenditure, and you'd be having to expect that when, at year-end, that we did that. But yeah, once we have budgeted for an expenditure, we can go ahead and do that.
I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilwoman Hanson changed her voice on us.
If we want to look at this another way, and based on what Councilwoman Dickie is saying, if we readdressed some of the capital projects to increase the comfort level of that expenditure, and delay, like the sidewalks, I mean, that's 756, I know there's 50,000 grant money, but I think that's for design. We look at the drainage, delay the Del Cambrey drainage, and the Town Square Avenue Fountains for $250,000, we're almost there.
Yes, and that's what, I guess what I was pointing out, is there are things in our budget that we could forego. However, we have to be careful which funds are coming from or how they're being funded. So there are things, if we decide, and certainly, I think the council would want to take advantage if there were some huge cost savings, you know, with moving forward with the project, even if we didn't get the stimulus money, we could probably find it somewhere. But we have to also understand that that's going to mean that there's some other projects that don't get done if we pull it from those project funds, or if we decide we want to pull it from our CIP fund. Am I correct, Julie?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if I could also clarify, it would also mean that you would be taking additional 1.5 million out of the CIP fund and reducing the fund balance, because, as Rick said, you wouldn't have the revenue for it. It's appropriated in that fund, but so is the revenue. But if you take the revenue away, then you're actually reducing that fund balance in that capital projects fund.
I understand that. Or if there was some other project that we decided not to do, we could help substitute some of that funding. Thank you. Anyone else?
And also, there's $37,000 in the development fee fund that could go towards it, too. So I appreciate your willingness to discuss this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dickie. Where are we at, Julie?
Briefly, just go over our debt service schedule. Again, this is, we have street bonds, this is the final payment, $136,000, and that's a transfer out of the HERF operating fund. We have general obligation bonds, $1.4 million, and that's paid through property tax. We have municipal property corporation bonds, and that's paid through the sales tax. And we have the Eagle Mountain Facilities District bonds that are paid out of the property tax of the Eagle Mountain residents. And this is just a summary of our general obligation tax levy. And again, the tax levy, the rate is based on the valuation. You can see that our tax levy, what we actually levy every year is about $1.4 million. That has stayed the same, but the tax rate goes up and down with the valuation. So next year, we anticipate the rate's going to go up a little bit. We're still only going to get $1.4 million, but because the assessed valuation of the town went down, the tax rate has to go up. Where do we go from here? As I mentioned earlier, we're going to have a budget open house on May 6, which is further public outreach for people to come in, the public to ask questions, take a look, see what's in the budget. We will have another budget presentation during the May 21 council meeting, and we'll have much more detail for the council, so you'll be able to ask questions again of the staff. We will highlight details again of the budget, and at this time, we would anticipate adopting the maximum spending limit as our tentative budget.
That'll be on May 15, June?
May 21st. And then hopefully adopt our final budget on June the 4th, which would allow us enough time to approve the tax levy at the next meeting. The law requires that we have at least 14 days between the adoption of the final budget and adoption of the tax levy. So hopefully, we can have that happen in June, otherwise, we would have to do it in In summary, all of the funds are balanced. There is no increases in staff, merit, cost of living, or salaries. The budget was framed with the council and strategic goals. There is obviously an increased reliance on outside funding sources for those capital projects. And we tried to make service-level cuts that affect the maintenance, but did not affect the citizens. Again, these maintenance and infrastructure, maintenance of the infrastructure cuts, they'll have a minimal short-term impact on residents, but if we had to sustain this level over a long period of time, they would eventually have a long-term impact. So it gets more expensive to catch up on the maintenance. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Rick, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that the participation, first year that we utilized an executive budget committee, the participation of Mayor Schlum, of course, Julie, Mary did a lot of the work, Shawna, Joan, and, let's see, who else was, I think that was it. I was on that committee. And then they allowed me to be a spectator there for that. So I just want to express appreciation to the hundreds of hours that they've put into this document, and appreciate all their sacrifice and hard work on that. I just want to say that.
Thank you, Rick. I think that goes ditto with the rest of us. We always look at the budget, it, we know it's one of the most important things that the council can pass, and we certainly appreciate all the research and the legwork the staff does. I've seen the many hours as I walk through the halls sometimes, you guys, and certainly appreciate that. Councilman Legay?
Yeah, I'd like to kind of go back to where we started, but, I mean, not completely starting all over again, but I kind of took a pass. There was a comment from Vice Mayor, as well as Councilwoman Hanson, regarding a lack of detail in the budget. And I know you mentioned you'll be bringing forward more detail going forward. I think you folks have done a tremendous job. It's kind of a shift in paradigm in terms of how you're budgeting and how you're reporting stuff, and there's a significant improvement. I would like to see a little more written explanation, however, and hard copy, other than just verbalization. For example, I think both Councilwoman Hanson and Vice Mayor Archambault had mentioned on page 88, when you look at the council's budget, you know, at first glance, it kind of looks as if we have salary increases, and we're receiving health insurance and employee retirement. And I don't want to go there again. We went there last year with the fact that it took six months for the citizenry to really get clear that we did not have retirement funds. I don't want to put that out there again. So I'm not sure the best way of doing that, perhaps just the notation in print indicating what was suggested earlier may be a way of doing that, or just at least delineating what the real-time salaries are. That would be helpful. And just with that in mind, if I can find some of the things that I folded back, which I can never do when I need to, here, let's see here, a little, I'm looking for a rabbit here in here someplace. Here we go, getting close. For example, on page 98, we have economic development, $149,000, downtown development. I'd really like to see some more details on what that entails. And another one that's kind of dear and near to my heart, and my comments are based on history in terms of going through the budget in the past, and I think all of us can remember that we're up here for the senior services discussion.
Oh, yeah.
When we look at the senior services budget, I'd like to have some more details in terms of what the breakdown is. I mean, there's just a lump-sum number. What part of that are programs? What part of that of, you know, X, Y, and Z? And it may be, you know, when I look at the account numbers, I can't extract that from there, because if it's copying costs, it's across the universe rather than in that particular area. So I just invite you to somehow maybe provide a little more detail in those areas, and I have a few more, but I won't belabor that this evening. And those are just historical stumbling blocks, and that's why I've indicated those specifically. Those usually draw questions. So those are my comments. Thanks, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Henry. Councilwoman Hanson?
Thank you. And following up on Councilman Legay, as I was going through, it was almost like a rule of thumb, if something was, if a line item was increased, just a sentence as to why it was increased, or if there was a new line item that hadn't appeared before. And that, and then also, like on 98, you know, those big lump numbers, you know, what lives in there? That would really be helpful.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, definitely, we will provide you that information. It was not our intention not to include that information. Our goal was to get this document out to you early, so you had a look at where we were at. It's obviously something we're still working on, in addition to the new programming budget piece of it. So we definitely want to put it all together and make sure that you have the detail and the information that you would like, so that you can evaluate it and make decisions. So we'll definitely get that to you.
Thank you, Julie. Councilwoman Dickie?
Vice Mayor, thank you. I wanted to really thank you for all of your hard work, everybody, everybody that Rick was talking about, and for your patience, because maybe when things are written in, we won't keep asking the same questions over and over again, because I know I'm guilty of doing that, and I'm sorry, we try to get through it as best we can, but you have all been very, you know, respectful, responsive, everything that we could ask. It's a really, really tough time, a bad year. A lot of people that are working are, you know, nervous, and I think we've gone a long way to put out there that we care about the people that are working here, that are serving our community, trying to get a little of this nervousness out. And our philosophy is being shown with what you've been presenting, and I really appreciate it, and hopefully, we'll get through those dates that you have set forth, and everything will go smoothly. And I think that the people that live here appreciate it, too, and know that you're open, and we're all open to all of their comments and their input. I mean, just really appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
And, Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
And I'm not being an obsessive-compulsive person here, I'm just saving myself an email before I forget. Page 15, I know, Julie, we all pride ourselves on being award winners in terms of our budget presentation, and I never find typos, but I did, so I thought I'd, you know, talk 15. Page 15, next to last sentence, first paragraph, 1,133 vacant, I think that was single-family? Is that correct? Okay.
No, it's singe.
Okay. I don't want to singe the family.
It's kind of a fire term.
I understand that.
Thank you very much. We will fix that.
Thank you.
We got to keep the fire department busy. Any other comments? Jay, do you have any questions, comments?
No, thank you, appreciate it, the presentation, I'm looking at that page, that Henry, Vice Mayor, or former Vice Mayor, and now Councilmember Legay brought up 1,133 vacant, single-family lots. Just curious, that, so that would be before the Elman property, I assume, which is 1,350, I believe. That's an interesting stat, I don't know if I've seen that before, but that's curious. Now, when I add on the Elman numbers, or maybe there's a reason we would not do that at this point. I think this year's budget, the general fund, is going to more or less speak for itself, dramatic reductions in operational expenditures, based on the need to keep our budget balanced and meet this economic downturn. We've done a great job proactively, the staff has kept us ahead of the curve. We're, our state office, our legislators, last year chose to raise their budget. We got ahead of the curve and reduced our budget last year's general fund, which put us in a good position this year. put us in a good position this year, and helped us to not make dramatic cuts that would impact our residents and businesses in our town as we reduced even further to keep up with the extent of the downturn. So, kudos to staff and getting innovative, and Town Manager Davis for pushing and challenging staff, and they've obviously responded. As I was starting to say, the capital budget is going to get more attention this year, and it's going to end up potentially being larger as a budget item, but we need to make sure the public is aware that we are intending to reduce the amount of spending in our capital budget year over year. It's just this year, due to stimulus and other opportunities, grants, we're going to have to budget at a higher number potentially than we have in the past, but that would be due to grant monies and monies from somewhere other than our capital improvement plan savings.
Thank you Mayor. Councilwoman Hanson?
I just had a couple things. On page 41, and I've seen this in, in the previous budgets as well, when it talks about salaries and benefits, the statement that in '08-'09, remains a total of 81.25 full-time equivalent employees, proposed for fiscal year '09-'10 compared to 106 in fiscal year '02-'03. I think it would be helpful, it would be a little more accurate to reflect that that was due to the removal of an entire department, and that was the Marshals Department, and I believe that was like 26 employees. So it wasn't that, you know, town staff got slashed so much, there really was one department, it just might be good to clarify that. And then I just had a, kind of a silly question on 50, under excise tax special revenue, and on the mountain bonds and the civic center MPC, in the previous years, you know, we've shown the amounts, and then in '09-'10, it's zero, and I just wondered where, where they live now. I'm sure they're somewhere, I just couldn't find them.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm sure they're somewhere too, we'll just have to find them.
I was going to ask.
But we'll, we'll make sure that, again, they're a transfer item, and these transfers cause all kinds of havoc with this budget, because they're in and they're out, and they're in there twice, and so, we'll make sure we'll find them and clarify.
Oh, I didn't ask the question, because I was going to feel so foolish, like, why didn't you know where it was? Okay.
Not a foolish question, thank you.
Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yes, I'm sorry, hang on a second, Councilman Legay.
That's actually an excellent question, because I had it mocked up in my book as well, but I just didn't have an ear, a rabbit ear on it.
Yeah, I certainly.
I'm real curious too. It's page, page 50, where you have the zeros.
Yeah.
I'm sure you account for it someplace else, but I, I just couldn't find it.
Again, it's, it's the transfers that are, with the new, the new accounting system that we have, things are accounted for a little bit differently. It's created a few challenges for us to try to get it exactly the same way in the format we had it last year. So, thank you very much for your patience, we're, we're trying to.
And additional notations too. And Julie, on the same page, under the, the community center FFNE, I didn't know there was any FFNE money left.
There is not.
Oh, all right.
Which, which one are you talking about?
I'm talking about the $20,000, but then it appeared somewhere else that there was going to be a $14,000 expenditure under FFNE.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, there is no FFNE money, there hasn't, we've been, that fund was depleted a couple of years ago, I believe, so we'll have to go back and check to see where these numbers pulled from and, and fix that.
Isn't it fun working out the bugs of a new program?
No.
They live just to make your life miserable. Julie, I'd just like to, I see that we have a lot of the department heads back there, and I just really want to express my appreciation to all of you for the time that you guys have each put in and the, and the, I know some of your budgets got, got affected in some sweeps this year, but I want to really appreciate, express my appreciation to all of you for the big effort that you guys put forward. Thank you. Rick, you're doing a great job of rallying everybody, you must be running to catch up.
I just wanted to disagree with that. No, I'm just kidding you. We, I expressed appreciation to our budget committee, and in a recent department head meeting, this, this budget this year would have been an impossibility without just a lot of work on the part of our department heads and their staff. I mean, really, we're, we're taking a lot of credit for assembling the budget, and some of the people who have put in hundreds of hours into this should get a lot of credit for that, but really, a lot of credit goes to our departments that have really dug deep. They have been thinking outside of the box to make this work, been creative, been innovative, been flexible, and I appreciate all their efforts as well. So I'm sorry I forgot about you guys when I was complimenting the budget committee.
I don't think that was intentional, Rick. I'm glad to see that Stretch has a new shirt on tonight. Yesterday, he was looking, looking like he needed some more wardrobe, and he said he was getting them in today because of the, that's your money shirt, huh? Thank you. Any more questions? At this point, I guess we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ah, the mayor kept quiet. We adjourn.
Thank you everybody.
Thank you Mayor.
Thank you Mayor.